All right, welcome everybody. I will call to order our work session of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, August 6, 2019. And would the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Calvert. Here. Trustee Conlon.
Chairman Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Via phone. Okay, good. Trustee Minneto.
Here.
Vice President Raymond via phone.
Here.
Clerk Taylor, I am here. The student, of course, is on vacation, and we have a quorum, Madam President.
All right, thank you. And let's see. I would ask Ms. Jen Van Tress to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, our newest Area Superintendent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Van Tress. Our next item is public comment. JJ, would you call public comment, please?
Todd Bailey.
Thank you very much, Madam President and Board, and especially the Board members who took the extra effort to attend by phone. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. And I believe it's Ms. Ray- Raymond, is that right? Yeah. I'm here today to just say thank you very much to Mr. Rombardo and his staff for responding to my public relations, public information requests. I will just share with you, over the last decade, it's been very difficult at times, not always, but at times, to get any kind of response from the district from these. And they actually responded to every single one. They did it according to Nevada law. And they also cited various case law in some of them, which I'll have for breakfast. That's really good stuff, Mr. Rombardo. Thank you very much. Just to go over a couple of them on request number two with regard to computer adaptive testing. The main thing we're looking for there is the cost. That's an accounting record. And the other information was provided in the staff report, which Mr. Hayes and Bryn Lapinta did a great job, as always. I've known both of those people over a decade. They do great work. And that report was more than satisfactory. On request number three, that had to do with the National Superintendent searches. Again, that's an accounting question that's in the software of the district. Perhaps we weren't clear about that. We will narrow our request for information and follow up with your office on that. I just think it's important to recognize, oh, sorry about this one, Superintendent Schools. That was in the previous board meeting. We'll try and do better about searching the stuff that's on the website. We're not here to make extra work for people. Sometimes it's just a question of pointing us in the right direction. On the KPS 3 contract, thank you for that. There's still some questions here. I noticed that it was signed July 28, I believe. So there's still some questions here. That's not a closed topic. But I think the main message here is, thank you very much. That's the level of professionalism we expect. And that's how you're going to build a castle of trust. So thank you.
That's all I have at this time.
All right, thank you, JJ. We will move on to action to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Dr. Taylor, second by Ms. Minneto. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. So our real work of the day is under item 2.01, which is discussion and possible action to provide feedback and input to the interim superintendent on priorities for a 60-day, 90-day, and 120-day plan for the Washoe County School District as related to feedback received from various employee input formats and surveys conducted since March 2019, based on major themes to include, but not limited to, low employee morale, organization climate and trust, special education concerns, to include workload of teachers, employee workload and working conditions, compensation and benefits, IT digital technology equity, and lack of school resources. So I will turn it over to Dr. McNeil.
Thank you very much, President Simon Holland, members of the Board. I'm very pleased that you all decided to schedule this work session. It really helps us to kind of lay out the next few months within our school district. I also want to thank and recognize our leadership team, who many members have taken time out of their day. We are in the midst of doing professional development all over our school district today. And so I just want to recognize our leadership team members for being present today. As you all know, we have spent quite a bit of time recently getting internal stakeholder input on what we have now named officially our 16, 90, 120-day plan. And I want to thank everyone who has offered their input and feedback in various ways and methods. We have a survey monkey that is out currently. And I've received approximately over 236 replies so far. And that was as of Sunday afternoon. So I didn't check it today, but I'm sure that we have received even more survey responses. And what that survey asked was basically three questions. What are the priorities for the interim superintendent for 30 days, 60 days, and 90 days out? And so with that information, as well as the information that you all have received on our 55 school visits this past spring for Listen to Learn's, we have been able to synthesize that, thanks to our Department of Accountability. Also, we held four casual conversations around the school district this summer. We had approximately 200 people, employees show up to those. We received a lot of feedback related in those meetings. And it was an opportunity, really, for the interim superintendent and leadership team members to listen and understand the concerns of our staff members out there. So all of that information has been compiled. And what you see before you is a draft copy. And I want to, I really want to stress the importance that the public understands and the trustees understand, that this is a draft. We welcome inputs and feedback around the draft. I also sent the draft to our association leadership last night. And I've already received some very productive comments from our WEA leadership team. And I expect additional feedback from our other association members. So once again, this is a very open discussion, I hope, with our trustees and myself, along with our leadership team. I will walk through, if that's the preferred method, as far as the 16, 90, and 100-day plan. And we'll go ahead and just take questions as they arise, if that's acceptable to the So with that, and I also want to thank Ms. Russell, Vanjie Russell. She actually made this a lot prettier than the version that I sent out. So I want to thank Vanjie. And Ms. Russell is also taking notes as far as corrections and edits. So we'll be able to move along very quickly for that. So the very first concern, obviously, is a hefty one for our school district. And I've been very open and public, I hope, around this issue of low morale within our school district. I've spoken with over 450 administrators this past Friday at our LTL meeting. I was over at our WEA Board Council rep meeting yesterday. I've spoken with counselors this morning. I spoke with nutrition services. And then also, I stopped by our career technical education. And again, with all of the input, morale continues to be an issue. And with that, as we walk through some of these concerns, as far as workload, what it feels like to be a teacher or support staff member or principal within our school district. So when we talk about the who, as far as who is going to help with the low morale, obviously, one person can't be tasked with that. It's going to be a team effort. So there you see in the column, Association Presidents, Association Leadership, the interim superintendent, leadership team, and the communications staff. The what and the how, in other words, during this, in this column, what I placed are how, often, and the avenue to which the particular issue is going to be addressed. So for example, quarterly meetings with our association presidents, monthly meetings with our association particular boards, regular updates on emails every Monday. We've gotten into a pattern now where I send out a communication, a weekly communication to all of our staff on Monday afternoons. It just so happens that sometimes those are also on Wednesdays and Fridays as well. We also had our Back to School Lead Teach Learn. That's what LTL stands for, our New Educators Breakfast. And by the way, we were very thrilled to have our governor stop by at the New Hire Breakfast. We will be extending the casual conversations. As I mentioned before, we had four of these over the summer. And I have heard feedback, rather through the 30, 60, 90-day survey, but we need to have more of these. We need to have them at different times during the day, on the evenings. I may even schedule just for one myself during the weekend, but more convenient times for our employees as well. Begin school visits, and I've been very public about this, that when we go out to the schools, it will only be myself, an area superintendent, and if a trustee would like to join us. We start those school visits this year with our high schools. So we will be visiting our class of 2020, our seniors. We'll have some very different types of conversations with our seniors. How are things going? How do they feel that their coursework is going? What can we do as a school district to improve their experience? So we will start those school visits as we get underway. And then my emphasis for this year, as you all know, we have turned over almost a third of our buildings with brand-new school leadership. And so my priority this year is visiting all of our brand-new school principals. And that's not a monitoring visit. That's for me to find out what support our brand-new principals need. And so myself, an area superintendent, and again, if a trustee would like to join us. But that will be the focus of my school visits this year. We will then start the stakeholder community meetings, the interim superintendent and the trustees. And the reason why I feel this is so important is, we are hearing from our staff members, but we also need to hear from our community, from our parents, from our students, businesses, nonprofits, and expanding the reach of our input and concerns that they see for their school district. Strategies used. In the right-hand column, comments and strategies used. Identify and discuss opportunities to improve employee communication and discuss district message of improved employee support. Provide regular communication to employees. The surveys that I have received, the feedback that I have received, more is better. Our staff members truly appreciate as much outreach as possible. So we will continue. We will no longer be doing the Friday Minute. We will continue with the Monday message. And I will continue with our, what we used to be calling a Deputy Superintendent's Weekly. However, since we don't have a deputy superintendent at this time, we're going to be pushing out through the superintendent's email that same type of information to our buildings. We'll move it away from the teams format. We've heard some feedback around some of the usefulness, and they feel that the emails. So we were very adapting to that. So those messages will continue to go out. We will continue, as a team, the Board of Trustees, the interim superintendent, and the leadership team, to share a message of stability and all of our core beliefs of serving with honesty, integrity, and kindness. We'll share positive happenings around the district on a very proactive basis. The Communications Department is very much in tune with this. They have been just extremely supportive around being proactive, so that we can get more and more positive message. One thing that our teachers and our principals have said over and over and over again are, there are good things happening in each one of our buildings every day. And so to really work hard on getting that message out, and whether it is a multicultural festival, whether it is a math lesson at a high school, we need to show our community that we are doing great things in our schools every day. And then one thing that's kind of fun, but, you know, sometimes just the little things help. So with the help of our administrative team, administrative assistant team, we're going to begin, I will be signing birthday cards for every single employee in the school district. And that sounds, you know, one thing that I've told people over and over again, I will not make a commitment that I cannot keep. I will not stand before an audience of anybody and say a commitment that I can't keep. And this is a commitment that I intend to keep. Because I can remember as a teacher, receiving a birthday card from Mr. Dugan as a superintendent. And that was very important to me. So we will continue this, and we will start on that track in August. So I already am behind the clock on that one, but we will get started with those very soon.
So now you'll be getting only three hours.
Yes, here.
Yeah.
So any questions? I'll pause here.
Yeah, let's get feedback, questions, comments from Board members. Yep, on Andrew, or Mr. Cottle.
Yeah, thank you. This all sounds really good. Some of the feedback I would give, things that I've seen, one, the little things matter. And I think that, at times, that is perceived in our schools, that the little things are just ignored or just expected, and don't expect a pat on the back for doing something that you should already be doing. And I think that really plays into lower morale. I like your idea with the schools. That's great. The sense I got from school visits in the past was that they were top-down. The emphasis was not on the students and the staff. And I like this idea of being bottom-up and putting the emphasis on those that you are visiting. And the last piece of feedback I would give is for superintendent, leadership team, Board trustees, I say, take the time to socialize at events, take the time for people. If we're showing up right when something starts, and we're out the door two minutes before it ends, it doesn't look good. And the people notice that. And so taking that time to interact with as many people that want to interact is, really does wonders, and it shows people that we care. And all those little things can really do a lot for our morale, because I think those are things that we can correct and fix.
Thank you. Okay, other comments? Yes, Ms. Minneto?
I really liked the birthday idea. I remember Mary Nebgen sending all the music teachers, "Thank you for your service," on March, Music in Our Schools Month. So I remember those things, as you do.
That's great. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I like this. I, you know, have any chance to read through this, because you sent this to us last night. It's really detailed, and I think that's great. And you've captured a lot here. And I think that matters a lot to our educators that took the time to participate, to do surveys, to come out in the summertime, that all their information is captured. I just think that means a lot to them, that it wasn't just, you know, going through the motions and checking the box. A couple of things, as we go through this, we're first a general comment, if, you know, if there are ways that the trustees can assist with any of these. And you mentioned visits, and that's great. And I think as we visit together, it shows a team, and we, you know, we started doing that before. And I think that's a good positive thing for us to know when the visits are happening. And you share with us your schedule. And Sam does a great job of saying, this is where the superintendent is visiting, let us know if you want to attend. I think all of those things are positive, again, and send a positive message overall. So as we go through these, especially if there's something particularly that, I know you have the who identified, but even if we can lend some support to something, you know, in any way, I think would be helpful. I think we're all willing to do that. And then the other thing I would say that I think we can support, for those of us that are active on social media, and I sent, I think I sent this to Irene today when I was going through some emails, when emails go, when, like, press releases go out, for example, because also somewhere in here is more positive media stories, that's a comment that will come up. And I know that's a frustration to our very hard-working employees, that seem to only read negative things, and there are so many positive things, like you said, going on every day. We can't control with a print, because I know a lot of stuff goes out. But one of the things that we can do is, we can do our own way of flooding it. And so if there is an easy way for us to get it, to post it, you know, and, I mean, there are times, sometimes I'll go through and go back to the Facebook page, to our Twitter feed as a district, and find it and share it. But if there's an easy way that it's there, it's for us, that we could get it, hey, this is going out, if you want to do it, and we can just, we can push it out.
Much more immediate.
Yeah, just much more immediate. It just makes it a little bit easier, because, you know, for those of us that are working, you're doing it in between whatever else you're doing. But that gets, if you combine all of our followers and people that read this and that and make comments, that's another positive, another way of getting positive things out there. If we aren't getting the reception that we might want, for whatever reason may be, from the traditional media, we can use our own mechanisms and let our own folks know if there's some easy, and maybe there isn't, I'm talking about something I don't know. But if there's an easy way for us to get to it, to see it, and say, great, I think this would be great to get out there, we want to share it, we can help with that as well.
That's perfect.
Good. Trustee Calvert, do you have anything?
One thing I would say is, on the morale end of it, and I just did a little reading before, is maybe teachers that are new, if they have someone that they could go to when they have a problem, like a mentor, kind of a thing, instead of like, oh, I'm frustrated, I'm disgusted, I don't know who to go to. But maybe if they're new, if we had a way for them to connect with someone to talk to when they have a problem, or maybe they just need someone to talk to, or maybe they're new to the area, so maybe just something like that.
And that's a great, and we actually have, within our school district, we have a mentor teacher program. And we also provide one as well for, as for our new principals. But you're absolutely right. Sometimes, I think, within our school buildings, and we alluded to this a little bit at the New Hire Breakfast the other morning, too, we get so involved with what we're doing in our classroom, that we forget that there are so many people out in our buildings that love to help. And it could go either way, too, right? As a veteran educator, I have something to share, but our new hires as well have a lot of experience, too, to share, too. So, yeah, absolutely.
Great. Scott or Melina?
This is Melina. I'll just add, kind of going off of both Dr. Taylor and Trustee Cottle's comments, but I would actually like to see the trustees as one of the bullet points under who, you know, I think, especially for the low morale concern, that, you know, I see that as much our responsibility to work on that as everyone else in the district. So, and Trustee Cottle and Dr. Taylor both came up with ways we can do that. So I think we should definitely be on the list as part of the who.
President, you can't see this, Vice President Raymond, but I actually wrote that down. And we have no problem adding stakeholders to that team. So welcome aboard. We're very, very pleased. Thank you.
That's great. Trustee Kelly?
And I just, can I just ask, too, that if you're able to really speak right into the microphone, everyone there, some people I can hear better than others. Thank you.
Thanks for that reminder, Vice President Raymond. We'll try to speak right in. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, and thanks, Trustee Raymond. I wasn't, I thought, man, I must be losing my hearing, but yeah, if everyone could speak a little bit more into the microphone, that would be great. Probably one thing that I would want to add, on top of what's already been said, I think one of our most impactful things that we do is principal for a day. Now, of course, that's an outside agency that works with our school district, Organized Principal for a Day. But it might be something good to also look at, could we possibly do other types of for a day? You know, for instance, teacher for a day, or librarian for a day. Not to, I would never want to overburden our staff, but if we can get the community, more community members, whether they're business leaders, other elected officials, parents, you know, if there's a way that people could sign up to do something like that, whether it's principal for a day, librarian for a day, IT for a day, you know, something that we can show the community what our staff does, not just our principals, but other staff members, that might be something that I think would be really good for the community to know more about what we do, and getting more of that positive message out to the community. So I'm not sure exactly how that could work, or how much time that might take to organize, but it might be something just to consider sometime in the next year or so.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Trustee Kelly. And I, too, was wanting to add the trustees to the responsible parties for making sure that we're doing all that we can, and that employees know, not only that we're doing it, but that employees know that the trustees are full partners in helping to build the culture of the organization in a positive direction. I also was interested in how we might structure the stakeholder input outside of the internal stakeholders. How will, are we going to open a survey to families and to business leaders, et cetera? And trustees might be helpful in identifying some questions that would be useful in a survey that we would put out externally. And then just wanted to know, what's our target timeline for getting this information, this draft finalized? We know it's going to be a living document, and we want to have it be a living document so we can be responsive, but we do want to get it out there and post it to the web. And I was thinking it would be great if there would be an interactive option where we post it on our website, where people can actually comment on the plan and be able to provide ideas and suggestions on the plan. And then that might also be a place where we could present progress reports at some regular interval. So just some thoughts about that.
So we had actually talked with our communications team to put out a community survey, very similar to the one that our staff has been responding to as far as the 30, 60, 90-day survey. My target for the trustees was to get this to you all by August 9, a draft copy. So I've actually exceeded that goal, so let's mark that one down.
Under promise and over deliver.
Yeah, see? But we do need, what I wanted to do, though, today is to make sure, first of all, that you all agree that these were the priorities. And if there were other priorities that, as you all are out in the communities and out in the schools, that I may have missed here, so as we go through, if you see a high level priority that's not on there, and then, once we finish this work session, we will go back, take all of the information, the feedback, add it to the draft, and then I would like to get this out onto the web as soon as possible.
It would be wonderful if it could go out on Monday, the first day of school. It would be cool if that was possible. I know that's a tough turnaround, but it would be great to at least have, and, you know, I would even put the watermark "draft" across it when we post it, because it's going to be a living document that we will add to and supplement, and so, but it would be very cool if we could get it out to coincide with the beginning of school. But just a thought.
I think that may be doable, but I'm not looking at Vanjie right now.
[laughter]
And she actually did put the draft down at the bottom, and also the date, so we can track it.
Great.
So to your point, we have some evaluation-type metric ways that we will be tracking this. And I think that's important, too, to make sure that we're delivering on our commitments to the staff.
That's great. And I want to echo Dr. Taylor's comments, that it, there's nothing more powerful than asking someone for their opinion and then doing something with it. And so I think it's really, really, you all are to be commended for the quick turnaround and pulling this together and showing people how important it is to you and to all of us. Trustee Cottle?
Yeah. One thought that I had, just to piggyback on Trustee Calvert talking about mentorship, and I don't know, maybe the district does this, but almost like a school vertical conference, to where the vertical schools, high school down, the staff from those schools are able to come together, collaborate in small groups, see what's working at schools. It's powerful, I know you're part of a team, and I know our schools do that, but sometimes our schools are in silos, and they, and then they don't really feel a part of our district or the district values them. And it's really hard to do a lot of district-wide events. But vertical is an easy way to break down our schools, an organized way with the area superintendent, and our principals, and our staff, to come together and collaborate. And I think that would really bring our staff together, especially since they're usually geographically in the same areas, might have seen similar things with their populations.
So I'm going to put one of our, do I see Dr. Parks over there? There he is. Okay. He's hiding behind Mr. Sherbandi. So Dr. Parks, would you like to speak a little bit about the vertical alignments and more around the professional learning communities, and how you all are kind of scheduling those for this year?
Are we official?
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Interim Superintendent McNeil, good afternoon. Yes, so to backtrack a little bit, there was a point where we did actually go out as area superintendents and do vertical meetings. And I'll mix in the PLC work as well. So in the past, as a regularly scheduled event, we would have area superintendent meeting at a high school or middle school. There, we normally would introduce our principals, talk about the There, we normally would introduce our principals, talk about the good work that was going on in our schools, and make it kind of a community feel. In, in many of our areas, those were very well-attended. Our, our focus this year as area superintendents, and this is really coming from our principals, the feedback that they heard, that we heard loud and clear from them, is they really want to get focused back in working in what we call professional learning communities. And so, with each of our verticals, we are doing visits in their schools where the entire vertical will be out of sight. So, so say in the Worcester vertical, all of the schools that feed Worcester will be visiting, walking through, providing feedback. And our, our concept is that the lead teach learn, learning will flow right into the verticals, and we'll have a seamless kind of action plan between the two, where we're talking about and learning, kind of revisiting our professional learning communities, and then in the verticals, we're going to take them into action. So, I do believe that, that those concepts will lend themselves to improving morale, because we'll be highly visible, and obviously, we will start with some, some positive feedback. Any other questions?
Good. Thanks, Dr. Parks. Okay. If there are no more questions on that first section, and if something comes up later, raise your hand, and we'll come back to it. Let's go on to special education support and services to schools.
So, throughout, once again, throughout the surveys and the information that's been collected, special education was paramount in order to address some issues. Obviously, we've already taken steps on the reorganization aspect of that, and so, just for, for our listeners, flattening the organization, having the addition of a fifth area superintendent who will now directly supervise all of special education services, the elimination of the Office of Student Services, and really putting this all under the umbrella of the Office of School Leadership. I've received very positive feedback from our principals, our teachers, our special education staff. Jen Van Tress, who is, is sitting in the audience today, is our fifth area superintendent. She comes with a wealth of experience around special education. So, again, the who for special education support and service to schools.
Can I, can I just interrupt for one second, interim superintendent? I think it's important, this is a public meeting, and we're live streaming, and I think it's important for the public to know, we actually used to have, how many area superintendents at one time, like?
At one time, we had seven area superintendents.
Seven area superintendents. We were down to four, with 64,000 students and 8,000 employees and 104 schools. And so, I just want people to be clear, this is not building an empire at the central office, this is, this is correcting a, a very difficult and demanding, and really, you know, a workload that was impossible to be totally successful for our, for that level of supervision. So, again, we were at seven, we're down at four, now we're at five, and I hope that's a right sizing that will be really helpful. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I will also add, there's some flattening that occurred because of the reorg, and you, and eliminating of the chief position, right? Student services?
Correct.
Chief student services officer, so that really flattened it, and made room for that other position without there being any more of a fiscal impact, but it still pulled down from the top to not be top-heavy, but to provide better service to the schools, to the people in the building, so.
Absolutely. And, and our area superintendents directly supervise our principals.
Yep.
There was a budget savings of $16,000 as well for, for this move, but really, the, the point was, is to flatten the organization to the point where our schools received much better direct support for that. So, within that column, interim superintendent, Office of School Leadership, our leadership team, communications, the communications manager, Special Education Task Force. Our Special Education Task Force is a group that is comprised of our executive directors, our area superintendents, and our principals. And in the past, this task force has been able to address certain concerns and issues that they bring forward. So, we'll continue with our Special Education Task Force, our association leadership and boards, and our Board of Trustees. We'll help with this. So, once again, communicating to all stakeholders, just as we just did now, for the reorganization of the Office of School Leadership and the elimination of the Office of Student Services, the introduction of our new superintendent, area superintendent. We will attend our Special Education Advisory Panel meeting, and Mr. David Friedman is very important with that committee, and I wasn't quite sure, David, do you want to spend just a couple minutes, maybe educating our trustees as far as SEEP? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, interim superintendent, David Friedman, Executive Director, Special Ed, Office of School Leadership, for the record. So, the Special Ed Advisory Panel was created about three years ago. It was more to focus, not necessarily on advocacy, but to provide recommendations to the Special Education Department about policies practiced. Typically, when a new policy was going through, we let the advisory panel look at it, provide recommendations. Some of the work that they did from the beginning was, if you remember, a couple years ago, we were charging money for special education records, you know, there was definitely concerns from parents with children with disabilities about that. They provided recommendations, and we went along with that. The, the newest feedback they gave was on the alternative diploma, and so, we have a new diploma option, but they had lots of concerns about students that are currently in the system, like, how can they access that without going back and, and taking, you know, a plethora of classes? So, we provide them pretty much what's going on, how do we engage our families for children with disabilities, and really looking at also creating a network of families through a special education PTO or PTA, too, that was part of their, you know, what they wanted to do. Thanks.
So, both myself and Ms. Van Tress will be going to SEEP and presenting our ideas and thoughts, and getting their inputs as well on, on our plan. So, again, for the 60-day plan, creating the Area Five, which includes both comprehensive special education sites, as well as our option schools are now, and that was something that I neglected to mention, so our option schools, where they used to be in a separate department, are now also under the Office of School Leadership. So, each one of our area superintendents shares an, an option schools. Again, we felt that it was important to share the message of stability and direct support to schools through this reorganization. We will be listening to our stakeholders on gathering problem areas within special education services. And then, we also want to, during this time period, review the WestEd report recommendations, compare with current status as to progress, and discuss other possible needs for a needs assessment. One of the areas that I was thankful, and I see Natha Anderson is, is sitting in our audience today, and so, she asked, we have a wonderful checklist through our compliance department that is very helpful to our principals, and that's something that we will be adding to our communications plan as well for this.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Taylor, and then Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. Interim Superintendent McNeil, I just want to thank you for referring back to the WestEd report. I think that was, that's one of the first things I remember being involved in when I joined the board a little over four years ago, and I thought it was really comprehensive, and took a really good, objective, outside look on how we can do better, because we know there are opportunities to do better there, and to, and to say, hey, we're going to pull that back up and see how we're doing, and be really deliberate. It gives us, you know, a roadmap that we, we paid a lot of money for, and we thought was really good, and also, I think, gives, answers the question to some of the why, as we're asking the people in our buildings to do things differently in terms of special. I mean, that's, that's difficult, because these are, these are, by definition, they're, they're challenging educational situations with our students, and so, they really have something behind it, it isn't, hopefully, that will help our, the educators in our building feel like their, think, change isn't happening just for change, because really, we had some outside experts come in and say, this is the best way to support our kids, and really make that a, an integral part of moving forward. We've had some great successes, I mean, the graduate, the gap has been closing, which is good, we have more of those students who are achieving at higher levels, but there's still opportunities for improvement.
Right. Yeah, you're absolutely right, and that was one of the reasons why we wanted to refer back to the, the WestEd report. We always find that it's important, you know, to make sure that if we're, if we're going to the expense of having an outside consulting group like WestEd do an in-depth analysis, it's important to kind of reflect and say, so what steps, where are you now, and make the progress?
Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, to piggyback off of that, myself, maybe, Trustee Mano, Trustee Calvert, I don't know what the WestEd report is, or what it was for, so if you could, help me out.
Well, that would be a gap that we need to fix. So, we will get that report to you.
Do we give a little overview of what it was?
Yeah, just explain it for everybody.
Yes. Yep. So, what it was is, WestEd came in, and Rory Fitzpatrick actually led that, and Rory has worked with the Nevada Department of Education for many years, she now sits on the WestEd board. And what they did is they took a very comprehensive look at our special education department, and areas of opportunity that were lacking within our school district. So, for example, due processes. How do we eliminate or reduce the number of due processes? Making sure that our special education teachers, our administrators, receive the professional development that they need. So, for example, LEAs sitting within all of our IEPs, but there were very, oh, individual education plan and lead education administrator for LEA. So, you have to have an LEA sitting at each one of your individual education plan meetings. But this was a very comprehensive report, we will get you a copy of that, and it was a very in-depth report, and it really started the discussion as far as how do we reduce achievement gaps within our school district around students with disabilities?
So, based on the strategies, we've kind of ventured away from reviewing that report and how we're operating, so we're going to get back to that. So.
I don't think we ventured away from it, but I, I just feel that it was important to bring it back and to say, so where are you now as far as the recommendations? What, what recommendations that, that they put forward? Where are you now with implementing those recommendations? And are there other areas of concern? One of the feedback, a lot of the feedback that we've received is the workload on our special education teachers. And so, taking a look at how can we reduce paperwork? How can we streamline that with making sure that we are in compliance with our individual education plans?
So, it's more of just comparing where we are now versus maybe where we have been, and not refocusing and getting back to what we should be doing?
Right.
Okay.
It's just kind of a review.
Other comments? Vice President Raymond or Trustee Kelly, anything on that section?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Trustee Kelly?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. And I, I have met with representatives, families on the Special Education Advisory Panel, not recently, but I know that's a really important panel, and we need to make sure we do everything we can to make those members of the panel feel valued and important, and once again, do something with the input we get from them. I think we have some work to do to make sure that they feel honored and valued, and, and really a great part of our mission. Okay. We'll move on to workload.
I was just going to see if Ms. Van Tress wanted to step up. I don't mean to put you about on the spot, but I am.
Welcome.
Thank you, interim superintendent McNeil, President Allen, and the rest of the board members. Oh, would you, oh, thank you for giving the.
Yeah, do you want to just tell a little bit about, you know, about your background? Sorry, I wasn't more clear.
I can talk forever, but I.
I know you can, but we don't, yeah.
So, just to give you guys a background for me, I've been with Washtau County School District for 24 years. I started out as a speech pathologist, working for the school district at elementary schools, working in various classrooms, working at Child Fine, working in every self-contained program, the Strategies, the CLS, the SIP programs at those levels. I went on to become a program consultant, and then a special education area administrator. At that time, those are what are now our ICs, our instructional consultants, and our ISs, and then our executive directors. So, that, we had the same kind of jobs, just different job descriptions back then. I did that for eight years. During that time, I had early childhood to high school, I had inclined to Gerlach, Gomes to Pleasant Valley. So, at one point, I worked with all of the schools that were open at that time, working on their special education programs. So, I am bringing in some experience with special education. After that, I went out, I was actually interim superintendent McNeil's assistant principal at Moss Elementary, and then went out to Van Gorder as the assistant principal, and then became the principal out there at Van Gorder for the last 11 years I've been out at Van Gorder. So, I've had some great opportunities, and I'm looking forward to joining this team and coming back to special education and working with Area Five, which is the North Valley's zone, and so, coming back to, to all of this great opportunity, so thank you for this.
Well, again, welcome, and I'm sorry, but you must have started when you were about 10. Child prodigy. We have many of those in this district, I've noticed, so, great. Okay.
So, moving on, we are now on page two, workload of teachers and principals, and I do want to state, I absolutely understand that, that our support personnel and our administrative protext also have a very hefty workload. The information that I was receiving, I wanted to kind of key in around the workload of teachers and principals. So, again, our interim superintendent, leadership team, Office of School Leadership, Association Leadership and Boards, and our school board. I will put that down here as well. But what and how? So, we need to review our assessments and focus on a balanced assessment system, and we've already had really great internal meetings with our Office of School Leadership, our Office of Accountability, Department of Assessment, Office of Academics, around what this could possibly look like. Really taking a look at mandated assessments versus assessments that we may be able to take off of the table for our teachers and principals, but still making sure that we are tracking student progress. Number one, we need to, it's important, but also, as a parent myself, it's always important to make sure that you understand how your student is doing within school. But we know within the classroom day that we need to take a look at our assessment system.
That was one of the things that came out of last year's budget forums, not this spring, but the previous year, was that that was one of the high priorities, if there was a way we could reduce assessments that could help us with our budget challenges. I know that was a very highly-supported item, among staff as well as parents.
And again, thank you to our student accounting and our Office of Accountability. We are very happy to state that we will be activating our teacher tool with an Infinite Campus, which helps out with attendance. This was loud and clear last year, that we had some concerns around attendance, and so, with Dr. Lapenta and Mr. Hayes, they have been working very closely with Infinite Campus, and we were able to get that, at that going. He's giving me the thumbs up there, so that's great.
And, and just to mention, at a previous board meeting, we were talking about the need to get that tool implemented, and that we were anxiously advocating for Infinite Campus and their team to get. and their team to get that programming done so that we would have that tool. So I just want to publicly thank our staff as well as Infinite Campus for making that happen before school started because we really needed to have it right now and it got done. So kudos to everybody.
And then really, just to look at, continue to look at and refine, define areas of problems for decreasing the workload. When we say decreasing a workload, we really need to understand, so what does that look like during the school day? What are some things that we can do as a leadership team, as a school district, to help our teachers and principals out? School visits to focus on the new principals, as I've already discussed, walking through classrooms. We received a lot of feedback from our teachers that when we go into a school, to absolutely try and get into every classroom. And, you know, I've been, like I said, I'm not going to make commitments that I can't keep, but it's important for our teachers to have that connection with our leadership team. And so when you walk into the classroom, to be respectful, I've said it more than once, that I will never interrupt a teacher doing their magic. But if they want to, you know, introduce the students, that's absolutely fine, but I will leave that to the teacher if they, if they want to, you know, interrupt their classroom during that time. And then meeting with our area superintendents on a weekly basis to review needs of schools and support. Every Monday of the Office of School Leadership meets, I would expect that they would still be doing that. So I'll be attending those meetings as much as possible to connect with our area superintendents and really looking at deeply the supports that our schools are needing. Again, for the strategies, acknowledging and recognizing the work accomplished by our teachers and principals through social media, our websites and our weekly Monday communications. We will continue to be very aggressive on this, getting those good news stories out that our teachers are doing in the classrooms and our principals are doing within their schools. Continuing to collaborate with our area superintendents, our principals and teachers on finding common planning times during the school day. This was something that our teachers have asked for consistently. Is there a way that we can find some common planning time, either within a grade level or a subject matter, to meet during the school day? And so I don't have all the answers for that. I think it's really important that our principals and our teachers have that collaborative conversation to see if we were able to do that. And then continuing to review areas of reducing paperwork requirements for our teachers and principals. Are there certain ways at the district level that we would be able to do a reporting mechanism that would be more efficient and streamlined so that the principals have that particular part taken off of their plate as well?
I had one, one thought. I know quite some time ago, I think it was either during Heath Morrison or Paul Dugan's term as superintendent, the school district did do some process improvement training. And I'm wondering if there's any support we can provide in terms of training resources for, for how to do process improvements like this? And how do you, you know, how do we look for opportunities? How do we evaluate opportunities? How do we prioritize? Maybe what are the, the steps in the flow chart of the process that can be eliminated? Those things that don't add as much value or add complexity to a process? Because there is a wonderful body of knowledge about doing process improvements. And I know one of the things we want to make sure is that we don't have unintended consequences of changes we want to make and end up having an improvement goal be waylaid by our adding or subtracting things that really were necessary. So just wanted to offer that, if there's anything that we can do in terms of resource support for any training to do some process improvement work on these things, I think it would be worthwhile to have maybe some, you know, some folks trained as facilitators of those processes. It's really helpful so that we can make sure we don't have missteps. Just a thought. Anything else on this one? Yes, trustee Cottrell.
Thank you. When I speak with teachers, I don't get a sense that there's a complete understanding of what on their plate or platter is state mandated, district mandated, school mandated. And I think it's hard to really converse with our staff on how to reduce our workload until everyone understands what is being mandated from where. Because if it's state mandated, we take those off the table because nothing we can do about it. If it's district mandated, we can talk about it at the district level. But if it's school mandated, through the Office of School Leadership, talking about what are ways to potentially reduce an area if we can. And so I think it's, it's a complicated conversation. It's hard to have until everyone really understands in the schools, what is being mandated from where? Because then maybe we can focus in on a few issues and then get real good feedback from our staff on a better way to do things.
I agree. And I think assessments are the perfect poster child for that as far as which, which assessments are federally mandated, which assessments are state mandated and which we as a district, you know, have that. So I agree. I think that that's a good conversation to have and it's a definition for our teachers and our principals as well, especially our new principals.
Good. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to concur with, with my colleague trustee Cottrell in that, and part of that conversation perhaps interim superintendent McNeil can be about the why. Because even though something is mandated, we want them people to understand. They may not agree because there's a lot of stuff we have to do that we don't necessarily agree upon. But if I understand why I have to do it, okay, I get it. That might help to at least alleviate some of the frustration behind it. And that's part of overall, really, the, when I speak to teachers and they always talk about workload and the things that they have to do and that they're more and more and more mandated, if we can help them understand the why, that might, again, just eliminate, alleviate some of the frustration in terms of doing it.
That's great. Great suggestions. Okay, anything else on this section? Okay, let's go on to pay and benefits.
So really, you know, when we were talking about pay and benefits, and this, and this came up with all, all, all groups, whether it was certified, administrative, support personnel as well. But, you know, the people that need to be involved with this, obviously our negotiating, negotiating team from the school district, our association leadership and boards, the interim superintendent, and I did have the board of trustees on this one for obvious reasons. You know, for the next period of time, it is with all intents and purposes that we will continue to bargain in good faith, and everyone has been doing that. We want to make sure that we are keeping our employees updated on the bargaining process through communications and our associations. Our associations have been doing a very good job on getting the information out to our employees. And then to continue to message the 3% cost of living adjustment over the biennium and the step increases that are in our F-20 budget as well.
Okay, comments on that? And we know interim superintendent shared with me an article from a national publication about morale issues for teachers nationwide and that it's not exclusive to Washto County, but it's really throughout the country. One of the statistics in the survey was that, for the first time in history, a majority of Americans, 54%, do not want their child to become a public school teacher. And that, much of that is because people feel undervalued. And, and so we want to do something about that. And this board was one of the few districts in the state that did go ahead and put the 3% increase for all of our employees into our budget before, before the ink was even dry. So I really applaud the trustees, my fellow trustees, and I, I, I want employees to know that we take that seriously and we will continue to move forward to help with that as we can. Yeah.
And I'll just say, you know, Pete and I, we were out at Transportation the other day and, and doing a welcoming. And I don't know if Pete wants to, to say anything about that, but it was really heartfelt, the stories that our bus drivers, our bus aides and assistants, these are heroes every day on our buses. And some of the stories that they share as far as protecting our students, protecting a stranger that was having a domestic issue. And just the very heartfelt stories and the work that they do. And so just honoring that, pay and benefits honors that work that they do each and every day.
Ma'am, I just wanted, I noticed your beautiful baby and that you're doing a great job of keeping that sweetheart quiet. I just wanted to offer, if you wanted to make public comments so you don't have to stand around till the end of the presentation. Okay, all right. I just wanted to give you that opportunity. Yeah. Sweetheart, future student. Let's see, class of, well, I can't do the math in my head. Okay, just wanted to make that available. Okay, let's keep going.
And real quick, speaking of class of, thanks to our Office of Accountability, each of you have received the magic magnet. So thank you, Ben, for the class of 2023. So these are our freshmen and these will go out to each one of our freshmen this year.
That's great. And, and those of you that can't see it, the zero in 2023 is a brain, which is quite graphic. So there you go.
Always looking to improve.
That's good. That's good.
So again, through the surveys, the listen to learns, we know that informational technology, IT and a comprehensive plan around equity. And in fact, I just had, when I was over at our professional development today, I had an ELL teacher come up to me and they were very concerned, they, or at Sparks High School, they were very concerned about the equity around technology. And we know that this is a huge issue across our school district. The interim superintendent, our leadership team and the board of trustees will be involved in coming up with and developing a comprehensive IT plan for our entire district. You know, one of the things that we know, we have three beautiful, brand-new schools opening up. All of those schools are one-to-one, but not all of our schools are one-to-one. And when we talk about middle and high school, we want to make sure that our students are prepared, ready to go into the workforce, higher education, post-secondary education, the military. And right now, I can tell you that, that we're not quite there yet. And so we need to develop a comprehensive strategy for that. And so one of the things that our executive leadership team and our leadership team will be talking about just this next week and weeks down the road, is how do we get to that point? What are the funding sources that we're going to be able to do? What are the policies and the administrative regulations that we need to do in order to have a viable tech plan within our school district? And that's really what, what this particular strain is for.
Trustee Cottrell?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for this one. I've had this concern for, ever since we started talking about this issue with one-to-ones and all that. And the response I got back then was, there's nothing we can do about it. So that's the end of that. So I really applaud you for taking this on, even though it's going to be a hard thing to do, that not ignoring that it's an issue. So I thank you for that.
I also wanted to just see if we could perhaps frame this, not just as a comprehensive plan, but also as a technology strategic plan. We have, we have a tremendous job to do in terms of equity and I absolutely appreciate that and we've, we've all shared concerns about that. And there's also a strategy with regard to the role of the use of technology in our, in our organization and with our students. I read something this week, can't remember where I read it, but of the last 11.7 million new jobs that have been created in the United States, 11.5 of them required some college or advanced skill that included technology. And so I just, in addition to managing and, and providing for our current needs for technology that we know, equity, replacement and refresh, infrastructure, that we also be thinking about the policy and the strategic role of technology in our organization for our students looking out 15 years or, you know, however long we need to look out. Because it's, it's absolutely present and we're going to have a lot that we have to solve all at the same time.
And I would also add, professional development for our educators as well. We can't expect our teachers to understand how to use technology and I am the poster child for that. I'm very, very public about that. But I take it on myself to make sure that I am learning and our teachers need to have that support and that professional development. So when we're asking them to use Teams, it's our responsibility to make sure that they have every avenue, every access point to know how to use the Teams system and within Microsoft.
And, and a great resource for helping our teachers learn is our students. Because many of them are a great resource for, I don't know if we have students serving on our technology advisory group or whatever that acronym is for that group, but I bet we have some incredibly talented students that could serve on that group.
I'm looking at Robert Seifert, no, he's shaking his head, no, we don't.
Might be something to think about because they, they definitely are ahead of a lot of us. Trustee Cottrell?
Yeah, one quick point on this, especially if we're looking at, as President Simon Holland talked about, 15 years out, is looking at the future of textbooks and in ways we can potentially revert to technology as, as more schools want to go one-to-one. Do we have to buy actual textbooks or can we just do licenses? There's, is there the cost difference? Is there a savings? Is it more? Because I know that that conversation is happening at the university level about phasing out textbooks in many areas because of technology. And I'm sure that's going to be a K-12 conversation in the very near future.
Great. And that has been a conversation. And I'm looking at our chief academic officer. Debbie, do you want to just speak a little bit, maybe about the RFP as far as what we ask for now?
Yes, certainly. Deborah Byersdorf, chief academic officer, President Simon Holland, interim superintendent McNeil, members of the board. So actually, work is happening right now in Carson City with the Nevada Department of Education to take a look at how all 17 districts in the state go through the adoption process. We just finished the one for our K-5 English Language Arts program. And that adoption process, some of the work, and I think maybe we talked about this when we came before the board, back in North Valleys High School, I seem to remember, we had further conversations around that adoption. But anyways, Nevada Department of Education and Washto County School District is very well represented on the work that's happening, are relooking at how districts adopt and the sheer volume of time that goes into vetting and then making proposals to, to boards of trustees around adoptions. The idea is that at the state level, there would be, for every subject area where adoptions happen, there would be a, a choice of materials. Don't know how many different choices right now, they're still figuring that out. And that choice would hopefully save districts money because there might be a larger, a bigger opportunity to buy in volume, for example. And then would also be able to better perhaps negotiate with different textbook publishers for more online or, what's the word I'm looking for? Thank you. Electronic versions of materials. So, but I will add for, for right now, for our ELA adoption, we did purchase online electronic versions. The cost savings is not real great right now, so we're hoping, and I don't know at the university level if they're finding that as well. There's a lot of money in textbook, textbooks at K-12 and secondary. But anyways, I think when we start to move forward with our next adoption, which hopefully will be elementary science, starting that, yay, I know, we're excited to, starting that in the spring, we're hopeful that the State Department of Education has their ducks in a line too, and then we can start moving forward. And that would be the very first one that maybe the state would look to adopt to help, to help Washto, its second-largest LEA. So I'm hoping that answers questions, but yes, absolutely. And we'll be working with the three new schools to start, especially with Polakitis, with the new ELA adoption, as we're working with their teachers. So, okay, thank you.
And trustees Kelly and Raymond, if you have any questions or comments at any time. And Trustees Kelly and Raymond, if you have any questions or comments at any time, just speak up, and we don't want to forget about you, and we want to make sure your voice is heard, so let us know if you have anything to add.
Done.
All right, so moving on to class size and the allocation process. Again, this continued not only within the 30, 60, 90-day survey, but this has been a frequent concern. We hear about it typically, an uptick as far as when we get to the overage process and the transfer process in the fall. We're very aware of that. Again, interim superintendent, leadership team, I called out the Office of School Leadership a little bit separately on this one, as well as our Student Accounting Department for Count Day. So part of the strategies on, as far as the Office of School Leadership, will work closely with Business and Human Resources to minimize the need for teacher movement due to over and under student enrollment. This has been something that these three areas have been doing on a weekly basis during this entire summer, and so I do want to commend our Business Department, our, our area superintendents, and our HR department. They have been week, meeting on a very consistent basis, school by school, to check over and under for student enrollment. I also want to send a shout-out to Randy Baxley, our district demographer. He is, he is an outstanding and amazing person, and so he has been working very, very closely with our area supes as well. And continue to provide frequent updates to employees and the community around current enrollment and the impact on budget. And really, that's an understanding of the allocation process itself. And so one thing that we did on our Monday message this, this time is to include a video link to our communications around the allocation process. And thank you to Riley Sutton and Communications for developing that video. But it really is getting back to what we affectionately call allocations 101, and understanding how those allocation processes are developed. It's a very complicated process, but the more that we can get that information out to our community, the better off we're going to be.
Madam President? Thank you, Madam President. On the, on the allocations process, because as we know, we're going to be emailed like crazy whenever those changes happen, because parents are, you know, concerned, we know that. And I, I mean, I just kudos for working on it all summer, you know, try to mitigate any issues on, on the front end. Is there any way, or do you think there'd be any benefit to, as people are coming back to school, and I know they're having their back-to-school meetings and sessions and kickoff and so on, or, and, or parent discussions or some, that parents can kind of be given a heads-up, if you will? And we don't want to scare parents, you know, and I know that's, that would be part of the concern, is parents get scared, well, is my kid going to have this teacher or not, and, and so on, but, you know, people are generally better about something when they know in advance. And part of what ends up happening is, parents feel as though this just came out of nowhere, and as though they've never even heard of allocations, and probably because it's never impacted them. Or in some cases, it's impacted them a couple of times, right? So I don't know what a strategy like that could be, but if there's some kind of way on the front end, it's just, it's, it's dealt with, that might be helpful. Again, I recognize, we don't want to scare people either. I don't know where that line is, but what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, we want to be as proactive as possible, and, and what we like to say is that we like to see, I'm going to say biscuits in seats, as an elementary school principal.
Right, yes.
The first day of school, when, when those doors open, to really see who's walking in the door, and, and to make sure that our infinite campus numbers are matching our students when they're, when they're walking in those doors and taking out those counts. And so that's something that we really need to make sure is happening. That was one of the big reasons why we are trying to get as, as much communication out. We're one of the earlier school districts in the state when we start school. And so we want to get that word out, that if you have not registered your student, to make sure that you are online and registering your student, so that we can be more proactive in getting that word out. But as these counts start to come in, it's getting that, you know, you're, you're two kids away, you're, you're, or three students away, and, and really having that conversation with the principal, because it is, at the, for the entire district, it is a budgetary issue when we talk about student enrollment, and I know our Board of Trustees understands that. But again, it's making sure that, that our community understands that this is a significant issue within our school district, to make sure that we have student enrollment that is matching the number of teacher allocations that we have within our school district.
How much of an ask would it be to maybe have some information on allocations available Saturday? Or potentially a, yeah, or potentially, even like a TV screen that has that video just rolling for the entire time, so that parents that are going by can watch it, and if they have questions, there will be people answer questions. Because of Dr. Taylor's point, I get that, too, is just tell us. Parents, parents understand that things happen, but they don't like the feeling of being blindsided when it impacts their, their kid, and especially if their kid likes school, likes their teacher, and all of a sudden they come home crying, because I got moved, my teacher's gone, and it's almost chaos, and what's going on? So, maybe not a thought?
Okay, for the record, I'm Renee Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. So we can actually go one better than that, because we have the area superintendents attending, and they are roving round, and they are, their sole focus that day is to help answer questions, complex questions, such as that where the likes of me would struggle to answer. So we have briefed all the folks who are, who are there exhibiting and sharing information, that if they get any question, if they have opportunity to direct our families to area superintendents to answer questions like that, then the area superintendents are going to be permanently walking around, aren't you guys?
Yay.
Lots of enthusiasm. But yes, so that, that is, that's the plan.
Will there be anything available that prompts the question? Because most parents might not even realize it's, it's a thing until it actually impacts them. So they may not even think to ask when they're going on Saturday unless they see something or see a video, what is this about? And like I said, I don't want to, you don't want to scare people, but you also don't want people feeling like the district slid one, slid one underneath the door again without saying anything to anybody.
No, so I'm sure you're right. I'm sure there is a way we can prompt that question. I just need to think about it a little bit, but yes, absolutely. Because that's the whole point of the expo, is to give our families the opportunity to have valuable conversations, meaningful conversations with school district experts, and we don't want to miss out on that opportunity. So yeah, let me think about it. It might be, it might be a Q and A sheet that we hand out to folks, or maybe it's something along the lines of, you know, area superintendents are around, and these are the type of questions you can ask them if you need clarification. So let me noodle it, but thank you for the suggestion. Yes, we'll absolutely do something along those lines. Thank you.
Well, I was just going to be, so everybody knows what we're talking about. Saturday, August 10th, from 12 to 3 at Meadowwood Mall, we have our back-to-school expo.
Yes, thank you for that reminder, Dr. McNeil. I do think, and I just want to mention, I'm glad you put it in the, in the Monday email, because I think the more our staff knows about it, because I, sometimes it feels as though, based upon the emails we've received over, over the past few years, sometimes it feels as though they don't even know, that they're completely taken by surprise. And I know the information's available, and it isn't new, but again, people don't seem to ingest it very much unless it impacts them. But the more the staff knows about it, so then when it does happen, and they hear parents talking and kids and so on, they can be more of a, this, hey, this is why it happens, and, you know, it's hard, or something, you know? So I think, I'm, I'm glad you did that, and hopefully our, our, the leadership in our buildings will have that conversation, especially if they know they may be getting, once the biscuits actually show up in the seats, if they know they may be falling to the gray area, that might be a time for the principals to begin to have the conversation with the people, that this is where we are, and so you remember, right, watches, or something. So, so it just doesn't seem so like we're trying to slip something in, you know, so to speak.
And that's, you know, Dr. Taylor, that's a really important message, because as, as a prior principal, you don't lose an allocation. You have your allocations based on enrollment, and our area superintendents consistently speak to our principals regarding that. You, you receive allocations based on your enrollment.
Good, good suggestions. Well, they're, they're going to interrupt if they have anything. And I just wanted to, to share with folks, so the next page starts the 90-day plan, which looks a lot like the 60-day plan with some things added to it. And I, I suggested, and Fangy, don't kill me, but I suggested to Dr. McNeil that maybe we could just consolidate it into one, and we could have a, a way of showing, this is, this is going to happen in the 60, 90, and 100-day portions, this is going to start here and end here. And that way, we would be able to see what's new in each section without going through the whole thing, and then we could use that to do progress reporting later. So that might make it easier for us to identify, but if, as you go through, if you could just highlight the things that are new.
So for the low morale, for the time period between September 1st to September 30th, activate the employee question and answer section on the interim superintendent website. A creation of an employee and community suggestion box on the website to include processes of vetting suggestions. This came up quite frequently within the 30, 60, 90-day. We want to have ideas, we want to share ideas with you, how do we get ideas to you? But just as importantly, I think it's important that we have a process as far as how are those ideas vetted, and where do they go? It's great to have an idea and a suggestion, but it's also very important that the employees understand this is the process, this is, this is how we vet if those, if those ideas. So for example, if, if it's a, a money-saving suggestion, then, you know, what is the process in order to say, how much money can we save? And is it worth the investment in order to make the situation work? And then the creation of a stakeholder task force on student behavior, trauma-informed practices, and family supports. And this goes directly to concerns that, that our leadership team heard loud and clear at Demone Ranch High School during a casual conversation. Trustee Cottle was there as well. We have significant concerns with our teachers and our principals, and our aides and assistants as well, as far as an increase in violent student behaviors in our classroom. And so how do we, as a district, and I stress, as a district, come to some ideas and solutions for that? I know that we've, we've had a recommendation to see if we can move this up in the time period, if we can move this up within the 60-day timeframe, so I'd like to meet with our leadership team and see if this is viable in order to do that. But really, to get our stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, aides, and assistants around what this task force would look like around student behavior.
Okay, any comments?
Yes, Trustee Calvert?
Yes. Is there any reason why this has escalated at this point in time? Is it just at that high school, or is this in the district?
It's within the school district. There's no particular grade level, there's no particular level. We do know that we've had a significant increase in kindergartners who are exhibiting very significant behaviors. But a lot of it has to do with environment, has to do with the national landscape, and so we have a very robust system within the school district as far as MTSS supports, social-emotional learning supports within our school district. We have very engaged counseling staff, but we need to come up with strategies on how to support our teachers and our principals with student behaviors in the classroom.
Madam President?
Yes, go ahead, Trustee Kelly. Uh huh.
Hi, yeah, I have a quick question for our acting superintendent. We have an agenda item coming up at some point in the future where the board was going to receive, you know, a briefing and have a chance for some discussion about staff, state safety, and working with, with students. Do you think that it would be better to have this task force convene and talk about the issues, and then present things to the board? Or do you think it would be better if we had that agenda, so the board can hear about it, we can have some discussion, ask questions, and then that feedback could then go to this committee to then start working on? Like, what do you think the better order would be for that?
Great question, Trustee Kelly. And we're up against some of our timelines, so we need to bring to our board, it's a mandate that we submit to you our behavior matrix. And so we want to combine the explanation of the behavior matrix and an actual presentation with Dr. Lamarcas. And so that will be coming to you in September, and we're going to combine that with some of the additional information around student supports and student behaviors in the classroom. And then, Trustee Kello, to your point, we would then be able to take that discussion from the trustees and the development of what this task force would look like.
Great, thank you.
Good. Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, we'll keep going.
So really around special education and service to schools on the 90-day plan, the point review of due processes and areas of needed professional development for schools to provide support. As a deputy superintendent, I would meet with our Office of General Counsel and our special education staff, and going over due processes that are happening within our district, and to see where areas of need are, and where teachers and principals, what seems to be the common thread within when we do get a due process request? And just for the public, a due process, for the ease of understandability, is when, for one reason or another, an individualized education plan is not properly implemented. And so we need to take a look at a district-wide, so I want to get back to those regularly-scheduled meetings, so that I can meet with the Office of General Counsel, our new area superintendent, our Department of Compliance, and find out where are those trends showing up within our school district.
Good. Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, we'll keep going. Additional items on workload?
So there were no additional items, other than just continuing, so this kind of goes to your point, President Simon Holland, as far as that tracking-type document, as far as are we seeing an acknowledgement of recognition of work around the school district? So again, no new items for the 90-day plan.
Okay, keep going.
For the increase in pay and benefits, again, no new items. We would be anticipating, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but within the month of September, if we're going to be continuing our negotiations, or if they will be unfinalized again, around information technology and a comprehensive plan, a board presentation on proposed technology plan, we would like to bring to you at this point in time within the month of September.
Okay.
No new items under class size allocation process. Again, continuing those discussions, making sure that our schools, to all the points before, our schools and, and community understand where we are at with that student enrollment.
Okay. Anything? All right. We'll go to the 120-day plan.
So again, under low morale, the, the newest one is to meet with the stakeholder task force on student behavior, so by this time, we want to have the task force in place and to have met at least one time in order to start addressing some of these concerns. For special education support and service to schools, I don't believe we had anything new, just the review of the due processes, again, with the explanation that I've given before. Workload of teachers and principals, again, continuing to review areas of need, reducing paperwork, requirements for teachers and principals, pay and benefits, bargaining in good faith, if we are still up there, and information technology. So there you will see the newest item, update on digital curriculum progress for all levels, elementary, middle, school, and high school. I felt that it was an opportune time to I felt that it was an opportune time to bring to the board a presentation around digital curriculum, in a shared presentation with the Office of Academics and the Office of Information Technology. And finally, for 120 days, obviously by then, we will have a very good indication as far as where we are with student enrollment, and be able to update the board and our community on a continual basis.
Comments, questions from board members? Okay, let's open it up for public comment, then. Todd Bailey. Oh, Mr. Bailey. Okay, we'll come back to him. Is there any other public comment, or anyone here who wants to add anything? Trustee Cottle.
Yeah, one thing that I thought of that wasn't listed is staffing. Staffing needs, and strategies to address those needs, as well as strategies to operate in a shortage, such as bus drivers. I'm sure those kind of needs are still going to exist, and I think that's an important note as we enter the school year, and getting through the school year with needs, I would say.
Great, and I think we will be hearing from the staff on August 27th with a follow-up report on the Council of Great City Schools' last review of the organization, and talking about our desire to have an organizational assessment going forward, and how might that be done? So I think staffing would be an appropriate part of that, for sure. Okay, any other comments? Mr. Bailey, are you ready for public comment?
Thank you very much, and sorry for the delay. Nevada Accountability would like to thank the superintendent for being a good first responder. I mean, there was a disaster here, and you've been a good first responder since day zero. So thank you. What is interesting is, it's not that much different from similar reports we've seen over the last 10 years. I read both of them, the one you had online initially, and the one you distributed today. And you could also change the word staff with students, or parents, or taxpayers, or the entire community. There's a lot of things in here that the entire community feels, and it's not just the staff of Washoe County School District. I also want to give you a little bit of a warning. You know, we did have Heath Morrison's hearing tour, we had Pedro Martinez's 90-day plan tour, where he called Heath a bully, and then did his own little education coup. Tracy Davis came in and kind of took action without doing a tour, and she's also been referred to as a bully. Ms. McNeil, you were a top administrator for all three. And so we want to challenge you. You served under all three previous superintendents, so you know what to do and what not to do. And the challenge is simple, identify what you can change today. There's very, there's a lot of detail here. What can you fix right now? And do it. Build the castle of trust. From there, you can identify what else you can fix, and continue from there. You can do this, and we support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Trustees, we'll bring it back to the table, and is there any other comments or discussion? I just, again, want to thank you, Dr. McNeil and the team, for the work so far. And as you've noted, this actually goes back to last March, when we all had some very honest and candid conversations about employee morale, and about employee satisfaction. And we all recognize it's critical that employees, I mean, employees are the way that we achieve the results of this organization. And so it's absolutely appropriate to speak to them first, and to hear what would help them to feel that they are able to do the job that they want to do. And I think you've been doing a great job with that, I think the staff has been doing a great job with that, and so I really applaud you. And I think that there's a lot here, I think we're giving you, I think we've got some great suggestions today of some ideas that could be added, and we really appreciate the collaboration and the team spirit with the board that is necessary for us to be truly effective going forward and truly successful. So I, and I also thank my colleagues on the board for their willingness to dive in. This is a much more time-consuming job, being a school board trustee in this district, than many of us realized when we put our signs out on people's lawns, so. But it's a very satisfying job, and it's also very rewarding to see the good work that's being done now, to really get us on the trajectory, to build that momentum for the positive future that we all envision. So thank you for working on that. And again, I know this is not a static document, this is a document that will live, and will be amended, and will be revised, but we also, I think, I think everyone here shares the commitment to publicly reporting our progress, to our employees, to our families, to our community members, and to our students, who have raised their hand and said, you know, you got to talk to us, too. And very important, we value student voice here deeply. So anything else from my colleagues, or Ms. McNeil? Oh, Ms. Minneto.
I am so thrilled, as a retired teacher, that all this is going on, and I emailed Kristen yesterday, with tears in my eyes, that I feel like we're finally going to do what's right for our teachers, and for our staff, and for our kids.
Well, with that, thank you very much, trustee Minneto. And I have said it very publicly, we are a team, and I feel very honored and very supported by our trustees, and also our entire leadership team, who I just want to publicly thank again. They have been working around the clock to make sure our schools are ready and staffed appropriately, and, you know, whether you're on the operation academic, we don't say sides of the house, because we are one house together. And I also want to thank all of our employees that have come out to the casual conversations, replied to the surveys, emailed me, so thank you all. This is a tremendous honor, and I know that we can do this together, so thank you.
Anything else? All right, well, we still have a closing public comment period, and I think we, I guess let's do an action to, shall we do an item for the direction that has been given to be incorporated as possible and as appropriate in the next version of the draft plan? Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees support the submitted 60, 90, 100-day plan with the suggestions that were shared for direction for the interim superintendent over the next 60, 90, 120 days.
Sir, second. Second by trustee Cottle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify with an aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll open it for closing public comment, just in the nick of time, Ms. Anderson. Todd Bailey.
Madam President, trustees of the board, Nevada Accountability listened and learned from the last board meeting on July 23rd that there was difficulty in developing a compromise on the selection for the next superintendent. We'd like to present to you the Internal Candidates First Compromise, and I brought a copy for all of you. The Internal Candidates First Compromise allows professionals who've dedicated their professional careers to this district and personal lives to this community first chance and priority over outsiders who've demonstrated repeated disloyalty to all of us. Trustee Scott Kelly should lead the superintendent's selection process. There's been a little mistake here. The message has gone out that nobody on this board hasn't been involved with previous superintendents. In fact, Scott Kelly was involved in the selection of two previous superintendents. So he knows what the community is looking for, and what the community is not looking for. Nevada Accountability will begin a public information campaign tomorrow to promote the Internal Candidates First Compromise to the public. Spark City Council, Reno City Council, Washoe County Commission, the Nevada Department of Education, the Ethics Commission, Attorney General, Legislature Governor, Congressional Representative, Secretary of Education, and the President of the United States. All of these people need to learn what's happening here in Washoe County School District. It's that important. And beyond this, we're keeping an eye on the situation as it develops over the next, you know, year and a half, between now and the next legislative session. There may be a need to restructure education in the state of Nevada at the next legislative session, by making the positions of superintendent, deputy superintendent, legal, and public accountability elected positions. There may also need to be the creation of a school capitalization board, so those responsibilities can also be separated. We do listen at Nevada Accountability, we learn, and we're here to help by taking action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Nathaniel Anderson, Washoe Education Association. I just wanted to thank all of the trustees for being at our new teacher hire breakfast yesterday. It was wonderful to see you guys in the social setting, exactly as trustee Cottle brought up, and then also just how positive this is, the 30, 60, 90 plan, or 60, 90, 120-day plan is, excuse me, and how you are addressing the biggest issue right now, which is just how much is on our plate. I really appreciate that, and the thoughtful conversations that this is bringing forward. So thank you so much, that's all it was for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there anyone else? Okay, great. Well, thank you, trustees, thank you, staff, really appreciate the work, and as the kids say, MTF, more to follow. Okay. Oh, that was bad, I know. Adjourned.[1788.22]